Good evening, it is seven o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. Dr. Oates, I believe you have something you want to share?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, thank you. Tonight, I would like to begin with a moment of silence for one of our RCPS family members we have lost recently. Specifically, we remember Dominique Lane, a second grade student at Shoal Creek Elementary School. We send our sincere condolences to his family and friends and ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please help me welcome the Pine Street Roadrunners and Principal Stetina Hanes-Williams to introduce our inspirational speakers this evening. We ask that our students please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after providing the inspirational message.
Greetings.
Greetings. Good evening, Dr. Oates, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Board members, Cabinet, and visitors. I am Mrs. Hanes-Williams, Principal of Pine Street Elementary School. Pine Street is honored to share the inspiration with you all this evening. The winners of our school-level oratorical showcase will be reciting their pieces. These students also represented Pine Street at the district-level oratorical showcase. During the showcase, students can recite a poem, famous speech, or a self-created piece. First, we will have our K-2 school-level oratorical representative, Selena Phillips. She's in Mrs. Stanford's second-grade class. Her speech will be about Misty Copeland. Following Selena, you will hear from our 3 through 5 school-level oratorical representative, Chandler Wallace. He's in Mrs. Brooks' fifth-grade classroom, and his speech is "The Undefeated" by Kwame Alexander.
I am Selena Phillips, and I'm in Pine Street Elementary School, and I'm in Stanford's second-grade class, and I'm going to be reciting "I Am Misty Copeland." I am Misty Copeland. I am the first African-American woman to become principal desert at the American Ballet Theater. As a little girl, I was quiet, scared, unique, and yet alive and vibrant. As a little girl, it felt like I was always searching for my voice, never really fitting in anywhere. It wasn't until I was introduced to ballet at the age of thirteen that I found my voice and my confidence in a beautiful escape from the chaos that was my life, the missing piece to my puzzle. Through it all, my mission has been to inspire others to embrace everything that makes them unique and to feel that they are limitless, that no matter what their dreams are, they have the power to make them come true with hard work and dedication despite what they look like or struggle with, that they too can find their voice, their wings, their missing piece.
Thank you for having me here today. All right, I'm gonna get right to it. This is for the unforgettable, the swift and sweet ones who hurdle history and open a world of possible, who survived America by any means necessary, and the ones who didn't. This is for the undeniable, the ones who scored with change on one hand and faith in the other. This is for the unflappable, the sophisticated ones who box adversity and tackle vision, who shine their light for the world to see and don't stop till the break of dawn. This is for the unafraid, the audacious ones who carry the red, white, and weary blues on the battlefield to save an imperfect union. This is for the unspeakable. This is for the unspeakable. And this is for the unspeakable. This is for the unlimited, the unstoppable ones, the dreamers and doers who swim across the big sea of our imagination to show us the majestic shores of the promised land. The William Rudolphs, the Muhammad Ali's, the Jesse Owens', the Athia Gibson's, the Jordans and LeBrons', the Reese Whitleys', the Serenos and Sherrills', and the undiscovered. This is for the unbelievable, the wee real cool ones. This is for the unbending, the blackest night is beautiful ones. This is for the underdogs and the uncertain, the unspoken but no longer untitled. This is for the undefeated. This is for you, 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 and this is for us. Thank you.
So would everyone please stand for the allegiance to the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Justin.
Second, Akita Palmer.
Thank you. A motion to approve the agenda has been made by Mr. Kenny and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we welcome the Conyers Middle School Bulldogs, Go Dogs, and Principal Dr. Deborah Reese to provide their school presentation tonight. Welcome. Woo-hoo!
Thank you. Greetings, Dr. Oates, Madam Brown, Distinguished Board, and Cabinet Members. I am Dr. Deborah D. Reese, the very proud principal of Conyers Middle School. As you know, our specialty focus is the Center for Technology and Engineering, and tonight, we will highlight our Computer Science class. I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our amazing instructor, Mr. Pilsen. He is actually a 30-plus-year veteran educator, and our three phenomenal students, Debden Michalak, Desiree Gray, and Deion Reed. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and we certainly hope you enjoy our presentation.
Let's play Tic-Tac-Toe. Tilt and move.
Computer Science at Conyers Middle School provides individual courses for our 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. 6th graders are introduced to basic components of computers and networks, computational thinking of everyday life, and how systems connect for business purposes. They are also introduced to Basic Block and Java coding. 7th graders embark on a more in-depth exploration of basic components of computers and their relationship to programming. Besides this, students will utilize computational thinking not only to solve problems, but to design, develop, debug, and implement computer programs.
The program we're using right now is called Code HS, and it's basically like several units and lessons that we are gonna need in computer programming.
Lastly, 8th graders start with the fundamentals of web development and its digital contents. Students will also determine how to edit and debug existing websites. Finally, they will create, design, and build a game.
Let's play Tic-Tac-Toe. Tilt and move.
In light of these courses, students are equipped for interlevel courses at high school. Our students at Conyers Middle School have access to three main resources for learning: Code HS, the Finch Robot, and the Spurrow Robot.
Good evening, how are you all doing? Chairwoman Brown and Dr. Oates and the board. I'm Mr. Pilsen. I have been working with a phenomenal group of students, thanks to Dr. Reese. She has helped provide resources for the course. Upon coming to Conyers about two years ago, they were having one course, so we built a course so that it would be an actual pathway when they leave the 8th grade. And so while sometimes all students are not able to be scheduled into those courses year to year, a great number of students are. And so I just want to again thank the board, and I'd like to thank Dr. Reese for her leadership and providing the resources for the students. And so at this point, we will call Deion to the podium, and then we will have, I'm forgetting names, we will have, not Destiny, Desiree, and then lastly, we will have Debden, okay? Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Deion Reed, and I'm an 8th grader at Conyers Middle School. This is my second year in Computer Science. Last year, I worked with JavaScript with a program called Care the Dog, in which a few commands were used to move the dog around a grid area. This year, we're working with HTML. HTML is a programming language that means hypertext markup language. There are many tags and commands we work with, including paragraph tag, which is p-tag, unordered list, which is ul, b, which is bold, i is italics, ol is ordered list, and table is table tag. Why do I like coding? I like coding because it can help us in preparation for future careers, and you can also work with robots such as the Finch and Spurrow Bolt we have in class. I can also do most of my assignments with little or no help, and there are times I can assist my peers when they have challenges coding.
Thank you, Debden.
Hello, my name is Desiree Gray, and I'm a 7th grader at Conyers Middle School. While in Computer Science, I have had the opportunity to learn some basic fundamentals, history of computers, and type of computer models. While in Computer Science, I have gotten to know hardwares. A few examples of hardwares that I've learned is the motherboard, the random access memory, and the processor. A few softwares I've learned is Microsoft 365, Word, PowerPoint, and Excel. I've also gotten to learn the Internet. Presently, we are coding using a language called Python, in which we move a turtle within a grid of 400x400 pixels. We're able to make the turtle perform tasks such as drawing lines and circles, drawing shapes such as octagon and hexagon, and do a repeat command to shorten codes. I enjoy coding because it's fun and I feel it can help me in the future. This experience for me has been amazing because I am learning coding, which is fun. I am able to assist my peers because I understand most of my assignments in coding.
Thank you, Desiree.
Hi, my name is Debden Michalak, and I am an 8th grader at Conyers Middle School. In the video, you saw some of the robots we work with, the Spurrow Bolt and the Finch Robot. I work mostly with Finch Robot. The Finch can draw, it has sensors and speakers, as well as programmable lights. I programmed the Finch to dance, draw shapes, and sense walls and objects in its path. This year, I had the opportunity to work with students from elementary, middle, and high school at Rockdale County Tech Day at RCA. During this time, I was able to interact with students and teach some of the basic functions of Finch. I enjoy coding because it's like a logic puzzle. You'll figure it out, and if you work hard enough, you'll be satisfied with the result.
Thank you, Debden.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Interesting, you know, robotics is my thing. So love coding too, but I don't know, but that's smart of you. So next, we will have Cindy Ball. Cindy Ball, Chief of Strategy and Innovation. We're ready to recognize some of our staff and students. Dr. Oates, will you and Madam Vice Chair, will you join me, please? After the presentation, board, we will take a brief recess. Thank you. Back up just a little bit here.
All right, good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Oates, our board members, and our full house. It's always nice to have a full house here on our board meeting nights because it means that our students are doing great things and we get to applaud them for that. So we will start, we have two smaller groups here from the Magnet School, and then we will go into a very large group of students from across the district from our Technology Fair. So again, we will begin with one of our smaller groups from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. The Georgia Association of Student Councils held their annual convention in February with opportunities to network with students from across the state. At the convention, the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology's Student Council was recognized for earning the State Council of Excellence Award. Rockdale Magnet School is one of only eight schools in the state to earn this distinction. You can applaud. They also won Outstanding School Service Project for all high schools for their periodic table cleanup project, continuing maintenance on the painted periodic table that is viewable from satellites via Google Earth. And they also earned Outstanding Citizenship and Patriotism Project for all high schools for their Election Week 2024 program, supporting student officer elections. Tonight, we congratulate the following Student Council members for their accomplishments. First, again, these students are from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, all on the Student Council. Precious Babajade. Ari Forster. Savannah Giddens. Trinity James. And Charlotte Wright. Big smiles. And parents, you're welcome to come up behind me and take a photo, but you will also find all of the -- Since 2011, the Georgia Forensic Coaches Association has held a Varsity State Championships for all events. Every spring, hundreds of students from Oliver, Georgia travel to debate current events, speak their message, and share their stories. The Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technologies Speech and Debate Team had a phenomenal season earning a bid to the state tournament. At the in-person state championships, individuals took home two trophies, and their coach was also recognized. There was also a supplemental virtual state championship this year, with the Magnet Speech and Debate Team earning a state championship title for after dinner speaking. We congratulate the following speech and debate members for their accomplishments. First, winning the GFCA Supplemental Speech and Debate State Tournament, and the state champion in after dinner speaking, Matthew McCoy. And Matthew's gonna get another recognition for winning third place in impromptu speaking at the state tournament. Congratulations again. Winning third place program oral interpretation at the state tournament, Olivia Land. And winning speech and debate Georgia Speech Coach of the Year, Cherie Ulo. Congratulations. Okay, this next group has over 30 students in it, so we're gonna break it down just a little bit here. That would be a really big picture. So Ms. Duncan, let me give you these, one, two, three, and give you these four, and we'll do this group first, okay? The Georgia Student Technology Competition is a statewide technology competition where students in grades 3 through 12 compete in a variety of technology categories. The main goal is to challenge students to become leaders in a digital age. This is the highest level of student technology competition in Georgia, with over 750 projects representing the works of 1,000, over 1,000 students judged at competition each March. Students must win at the region level to advance to this competition. Tonight, we are recognizing our students across the district who placed first in the region and moved on to participate in the state technology fair competition. We also have four students who placed at the state level, so we are gonna begin by recognizing our four students who placed at the state level. Winning second place in the state in the category Audio Production, Daniel Smith from Rockdale County High School. Also winning second place in the state for audio production from Rockdale County High School, Orin Hoyt. Winning second place in the state for device modification, Roderick Snead from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. And from Honey Creek Elementary School, winning second place in the state for graphic design, Aubrey Hill. Coming behind me? Okay, and the rest of our students being recognized tonight, again, all were, won first place in the region, so they are all first-place winners in the region who went on to participate in the state competition. So I'm gonna read the name and the category, since we all know that they all are first-place region and state participants, and I will go down about four categories, and then we'll do a photo, and then we'll move to more, okay? All right. For the category 3D Modeling from Rockdale County High School, Devin McCray. Also 3D Modeling, Rockdale County High School, Taryn McCray. Also 3D Modeling from Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, Peyton Shattick. Moving on to the category Animation, Rockdale County High School, Brianna Fleming. Also Animation from Pine Street Elementary, Sarah Kizwi. Rounding out the Animation category from Honey Creek Elementary, Kenneth Shepherd. Moving on to Audio Production category from Rockdale County High School, Azalea Gray. Also Audio Production, Rockdale County High School, Omatola Osun. From Davis Middle School, also the category is Audio Production, London Vereen. Rounding out the Audio Production category from Honey Creek Elementary, Jackson Watlington. In the category Device Modific -- sorry, we're not done yet. We're gonna go a little further. In the category Device Modification from CJ Hicks Elementary School, Zion Hopkins. In the category Digital Game Design from Rockdale County High School, Alana Ash. Also Digital Game Design, Rockdale County High School, Andy Garcia. From Memorial Middle School, again, the category Digital Game Design, Caleb Ferrato. From Honey Creek Elementary School, in the Digital Game Design category, Levi Reyes. In the category Digital Photo Production from Honey Creek Elementary, Peyton Caligane. And we will round out this first group, again, Digital Photo Production from Rockdale County High School, Kristen Thomas. We'll pause to do a photo with this group. And Dr. It's while we're taking this last photo, I have just been told that Zion also won third place at the state, and I apologize, I did not have that on my list. But Zion, congratulations. All right, we will, congratulations. Okay, this next group, I think we'll just try to keep going. Okay. So the next category is graphic design from High Tower Elementary, Ansley Kirby. From Rockdale County High School in graphic design, DeMarcus Holt. From the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, graphic design, Skylar Chandler. In the category internet applications from Rockdale County High School, Imani Edwards. Also internet applications from Honey Creek Elementary, Suki Davis Murray. From Rockdale County High School, the category is mobile apps, Sabella Olulekin. Also the category mobile apps from Rockdale County High School, Mia James. In the category multimedia applications from Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, Jehoshua Silvestri. From Flat Shoals Elementary, in the category multimedia applications, Angelie Desmawers. From Honey Creek Elementary, again, multimedia applications, Maya Mojes. Moving on to the category of productivity design from Rockdale County High School, Jaden Isaac. Again, productivity design, Rockdale County High School, Gabriel Meri- Meriwether. In the category project programming, Rockdale County High School, Grayson Gibson. Moving on to the category of robotics from Rockdale County High School, Christopher Porter. Also robotics from Rockdale County High School, Isaiah Francis. Keeping with the category robotics from Barksdale Elementary, Elizabeth Twum. And our last category is video production from General Ray Davis Middle School, Cameron Jeffries. Again, video production from High Tower Trail Elementary, Leila Gordon. Video production representing Honey Creek Elementary, Marley Maddox. And rounding out the video production category from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, Sky Chandler.
Hello, Dylan. The time is now seven forty-five PM, and I would like to call the meeting back to order. Do we have any visitors tonight? Do we have any cars? None. Okay, so let's move on. I would like to turn it over to Dr. Oates for his cabinet updates. Dr. Oates?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We do have one official presentation this evening. That's coming from our distinguished Director of Athletics, our Athletic Director, Dr. Keisha Rawls. Dr. Rawls?
Greetings, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Duncan, and Dr. Oates, Distinguished Board and Cabinet. Thank you for this opportunity to present the athletic strategic plan to you tonight. So as you can see, we came up with a great little mnemonic, redefining the overall impact of conduct and knowledge in the development of athletic leaders, because we know that our athletes are the leaders in their respective buildings. And so if you just follow along, just giving you a snapshot of what our athletic programs are. We know that athletics not only are the physical part, but their behavior, the emotional, the social development that comes with their athletic participation. And research has shown that participation in athletics and other extracurricular activities has positive impacts on their academic achievement as well as other intangibles such as leadership, their positivity in others, and dropout rates are also impacted by that. If you can also look at it, of the seventeen athletic sports that we offer here, that's seventeen of the twenty-two that are offered by the Georgia High School Association. So the only five that we currently do not offer are bass fishing, gymnastics, lacrosse, competitive dance, and adaptive sports. And so in those seventeen activities, we have near over two thousand athletes and nearly two hundred coaches and other support staff that support these athletes in their athletic endeavors. So you're familiar with the strategic improvement process. And what I'm going to talk about tonight, and specifically what our athletic strategic plan focuses on, is these two areas. Where are we now and where do we want to go? So the strategic plan for athletics really follows along with the district plan and those goal areas. So if you see with goal area number one, we're retaining recruiting these teacher coaches and other athletic personnel. Now how do we go about doing that? In the first bullet, A, look at how we go about diversifying the applicant pools that we are trying to fill these positions with so that, one, knowledge based, they know the games that we're hiring them to coach, but also that they're representative of our student population that they're going to be servicing. So our student athletes can have that individual that they're able to relate to. And two, in the investment, this is really about the professional development opportunities for our specific coaches and athletic personnel. We do a lot of PD with our teachers on the instructional side. So to address this, within the real academy, we created a team cohort for aspiring athletic directors where that's their specific PD. And we also have the coaches academy that was created for all coaches that are new to our district and new to taking on that responsibility of being a coach, that we will teach them the RCPS policies specific to athletics as well as the GHSA constitution and bylaws. Within that, there are also different scenarios that we do scripted scenarios to help them in those situations where if they're not familiar with dealing with a parent, or if they're not familiar with dealing with other members of their coaching staff, we do these scenarios to help engage them in those opportunities. In addition to that, the National Interscholastic Athletic Association and the National Federation of State High Schools has certification programs that are specific for athletic directors and coaches. So there are certification programs that they can acquire that now that professional development piece and that ongoing learning is being conducted within our athletic personnel. Now, in the last one, in recognition and value, how do we do that? Incentivizing. And so in that incentivizing, we're talking about looking at our supplement scale and how it compares to other metro Atlanta districts to see if we can keep our coaches, if we can recruit more coaches when it comes to pay, and when they're looking at apples to apples from programs or positions that they want to take in our district. And then lastly, incentivizing those coaches and athletic personnel that acquired those additional certifications. We add teachers, we give them those bonuses for those add-ons, but also looking at if we can look at doing that for our athletic personnel as well. Now, goal area two, specific to our students and their engagement and what they're getting out of this opportunity. So in the first one with the equity and access, just looking at the programs out of those seventeen are the other, other, other areas where we can enhance the opportunities that are available. Now, we offer seventeen of twenty-two, so where we can actually do that is in our middle school programs and introducing and adding more sports in middle school. So now that introductory lesson to those athletic programs is happening in middle school that then translate to better production in our high school programs because they've been participating in those sports for three years. that then translate to better production in our high school programs, because they've been participating in those sports for three years prior to getting to our high schools. The other piece with that is just specifically looking at our female population, because over the last decade, female participation in sports has declined. Yes, there are some specific sports where the publicity is greater, so you're thinking that the the participation is great, but overall, female participation numbers are down. So this would be an area. In academics, athletics has worked really closely recently with our counseling department in presenting at the transition nights for fifth grade to sixth grade and eighth grade to ninth grade to talk to those rising and future student athletes to what the academic expectations are and what the eligibility requirements are for them if they want to participate in athletics when they get to middle and high school. The second piece with that is we have the Student-Athlete Academic Award, which is awarded annually to a graduating male and female athlete with the highest non-weighted GPA. So each high school gets a representative that is nominated, well, that is awarded. And then there's a district representative that is awarded, and we normally do that during the graduation practices. Now, the third bullet is the N C two A and N A I A. And what these are specifically are the post-secondary opportunities for athletic competition. So our athletes being able to continue playing in their colleges, right? So one area that I would really love is to have a counselor at the high schools that's dedicated specifically to working with our athletes. The reason is our athletes have unique needs that are different from just your traditional graduating senior. So take, for example, an athlete that may have failed a class as a freshman or sophomore. That credit recovery class can, yes, earn them that credit that they need to graduate, but that credit recovery class won't count in the initial eligibility requirements for them to play in college. So having that counselor there to pick up that, yes, we've accounted for those credits and they have sixteen, but are those sixteen enough for them to qualify to play in college? So that would be ideally. And then the third one, I talked about the National Federation having those certification programs for our coaches, but they also have free courses that are available for students. So courses in implicit bias, what it takes to be a captain, sportsmanship, mental health and wellness, those are also free classes that if we're talking about PD for our student athletes specifically, those are opportunities that they can take those classes. The Student-Athlete-Captain's Council has also been created for student athletes' voice. I'm in constant communication with athletic directors and coaches at the schools, but this captain councils gives students a voice. So where we may have blinders of areas that we see are of concern, this is coming directly from our student athletes and telling us what some of the concerns they have in the operations of their athletic programs. Goal area three, with community and engagement, this is getting our student athletes out in the community for some of the many activities and opportunities that they have. The first bullet is very critical, and I am giving a shout-out to our communications department, because they do an excellent job in promoting our athletic programs. But the challenge is, since the Rockdale citizen is no longer in publication, we don't have that local outlet to highlight what our accomplishments and achievements are. We don't have that opportunity to promote where our upcoming athletic events are. So our schools are having to really do a good job on social media and pubbing and putting that information out there. So that is definitely a challenge, and it causes more challenges for us that I'll get to a little bit later. But in the student-athlete engagement, that is, again, getting our athletes out there, engaging with the community, engaging with our stakeholders, so that they can now want to be a part of, to come and fill our bleachers, come and fill our stadiums, and supporting our athletic teams. And how do we do that? Our cheerleaders are present at Parent Academy, so they're engaging with those families that are coming there for all of the local festivals that we have, putting our athletes out there in their uniforms, that, again, they're building those relationships, they're getting that opportunity, and now we're getting the community to come back in and support the good things that we have going on within our athletic programs. And then we have our civic groups. So getting our A Ds and coaches to go to Rotary to talk about, again, the good things that are going, to get them in contact with different stakeholders within our community, that they're establishing those relationships, not just partners in education, but other in-kind services that may be able to meet some of the needs that our programs currently have. Excuse me. The second bullet to that is also looking at how we can do a better job, and I say we in all of our athletic programs, in establishing these relationships early with our elementary and middle school students and our Parks and Rec Department, because we have to recruit and retain our own athletes. We have to be visible and establish those relationships with those parents that in elementary, they're looking forward to the opportunity to be a bulldog, a patriot, a Seminole, and an eagle. And in middle school, they're looking forward to going on and competing and continuing that legacy of being that mascot and representing our athletic programs. And then the last bullet is really just about, again, always exploring those opportunities that we have to engage more students and what can we do to get them involved in our programs. All right, this one, positive culture and climate, we know that athletics really is the driving force for what your school climate is going to be like, right? And so in enhancing the mental health services, we have a plethora of resources that are available during the regular school hour. But when it comes to after-school hours, when one of these crises happens, what resources are available to our coaches to help them if there is that crisis that happens at eight o'clock after a practice or at ten o'clock after a game? So really looking at identifying what is available for them in those non-traditional school hours. And safety and orderly environment, we've done an excellent job with this. We're reconditioning our equipment so that it's always maintained to a high standard and safe for our athletes to use. We've updated our weather system, so now y'all are getting the alerts. You're welcome. So we updated our weather system so that now it's not only tracking lightning, but it's also tracking the heat, so we know when we're within those parameters where we need to make those adjustments to our practice schedules. Also, we have updated our emergency action plans and ensuring that our A E D units are effective and ready to use in the event that we needed them. The other part with that is we've partnered with National EMS. And so we normally, at the beginning of pre-planning, before we start our seasons, we've had emergency drills where National EMS has come in, and we've actually run a full-scale drill in responding to a cardiac emergency or responding to exertional heat illness. So now EMS knows what we have available, what supplies we have on our campus. So in the event that there is an emergency, that relationship and that communication has already been established, so that we can provide the best care in any emergency situation. Now, school pride, again, it comes with getting out there and get people in to come, but it also comes with winning. And the second bullet there, in the competitive piece, truth be told, Rockdale and Heritage are going to participate in one of the toughest regions in the state of Georgia for the next two years. That's the reality. But we know that school pride is enhanced with winning. So encouraging our coaches that during those non-region games, schedule it more like competitive opponents, so that our kids can experience some success early in the season before they have to go and play Goliath weekend and week out in all of our athletic contests. And again, with wins comes that school pride, that culture is enhanced, but we have to be intentional about our efforts to do that. And then the last one is character traits. We've had some issues in the last couple years with some parents and some student athletes' behaviors. So what we created was this expectation pledge, and we have one for parents, and we have one for student athletes. And it goes with R C P S, Responsibility, Character, Personal Conduct, and Sportsmanship. So it outlines what our expectations are when you attend an athletic event and what the consequences are if you don't meet what our expectations are. And then lastly, the operational efficiency, this is just looking at our facilities and reviewing what we have, what resources we need, and what other operational improvements that we could do within athletics. So the first one is maintenance of our facility. So we have some great facilities, but there's always room for improvement. So what can we do to enhance that curb appeal? What can we do to enhance our facilities so that they are state-of-the-art? And that our kids feel comfortable and they're proud to come into those athletic venues and want to participate? The athletic training services, each of our high schools has a certified athletic trainer that supports all of the medical needs for that school and also the feeder middle school. In addition to that, each of our high schools has been recognized by the National Athletic Trainers Association as first-team Safe Sports Schools. So what that means is, from national-based industry standards, our programs have met those safety standards to be recognized nationally. With the improvements in transportation, this is a wish list, but look at the feasibility of if we can get our out-of-season coaches to transport our smaller teams for more closer regional competitions. Region being, we've had some incidents where some teams had had to leave early because of transportation and that routing and scheduling, but that was also a loss of instructional time. So if we can look at some other ways to get around, not that loss of instructional time, but also just more better efficiency in our operations, that would be amazing. And then for our students that have economic challenges, we know the bus will get them on campus, but those that have those challenges of getting home after camp, after school, and they can't participate because they don't have that ride, maybe we should look at the feasibility of an activities bus that takes them home after practice, so that, you know, we're still meeting a need that is present. And then the last bullet with the fiscal responsibility is, when we improve those facilities, that it's going to be appealing to other organizations, right? So this is an opportunity for A A U and other clubs to come in and use our facility. One, it generates revenue. Two, it puts a better image out there, and we're getting people on our campus. And then the last one is just working with our procurement department to see if there are already some established relationships with businesses that can be cost-saving initiatives for our athletic programs and some of the resources and needs that we have. And so now, looking at the areas of focus. So the two areas, where do we want to go? So it's the supplements and the facility enhancements. And so if you look at this, you'll see that this is a 2021 view of a comparative of all of the supplements for metro Atlanta school districts. Now, mind you, it's 2122, so some of it probably has changed a little bit. But whereas you see that we are comparable in the amount of the supplement, the highlighted schools offer extra days. And so when it comes to really looking at opportunities, if the distance and travel isn't going to be a factor, those additional days could be a factor, whether it's ten extra days or twenty extra days, that really is the cost difference in coaches choosing to stay with us or coaches choosing to take opportunities elsewhere. So that is an opportunity. The other thing with our current supplements are, they are based on the prior entry-level teacher's salary. And so that has recently changed, so maybe looking at adjusting where ours is, so that, again, we're staying comparable and we're staying in the competitive race for coaches to be able to promote our athletic programs. All right, and now facilities, and asking this question really like, where do athletic facilities fit into our priorities? And so here, looking at the bottom, just whether it's a district responsibility or asset or a school responsibility and asset. And for a lot of our athletic facilities, they're also used as instructional facilities. So when a repair or an upgrade is necessary, oftentimes because it's an athletic facility, athletics is looked at to carry that load of making that repair. But it's also instructional, so there's some shared responsibility that can come there in getting some of these upgrades and repairs that are needed for some of these programs. In addition to that, our facilities are oftentimes looked like not as part of. So it's the athletics and then it's the school. But our athletic facilities are an extension of the classroom. Yes, those hard skills are very important, but going back to those soft skills that are learned from athletic participation, it's a part of the classroom. It's an extension of the classroom. And when we're looking at, how do we retain our coaches? How do we retain our athletes? It's in the facilities. That's the first thing that they see when they come on campus, are those facilities. So just to give an example, in some of that shared responsibility in pressure washing the stadium, we've used the stadium for graduations, but athletics is responsible for pressure washing the stadium. So again, those are some of those shared responsibilities that, when it comes to us ensuring that we have what our program needs, now we have to make a decision on what's appealing and, you know, what's going to make it have more curb appeal, but we need those uniforms, we need those balls, and we need those bats and all of that other equipment. So decisions have to be made at that time. Now, this is my crystal ball of if I could, I would, and all of the great things that I would love to see happen, but it's not just me. This is those conversations that I have with athletic directors, that I have with coaches, that I have with student athletes on some of those improvements that they would like to be seen. So at Heritage, we're addressing the seating issue on the stage in their gym. But there's also concerns about the bleachers that are there, the gym floors. And you think, what about the gym floors? But it's something just aesthetic of branding your athletic program. We have our nice fields with the new school logos, but none of our gym logos match our stadium logos. So it's about branding and having one R, one H, one S. So other areas to look at, especially at Heritage, the field house, that's another one of those, who's responsible and who's not. There are multiple repairs that are needed in that field house, including an air conditioner. Yes, football uses it, and the athletic teams use it, but it's also the weight training class during the day. So again, those are some of those shared responsibilities. Some other parts, the protective equipment, just upgrades to the weight room and so forth. Same thing at Rockdale, they have the same, but one of the challenges at Rockdale is storage. So the visiting side at Rockdale, that's where we have a lot of the houses for storage, but it's still not sufficient for what they need. So if Rockdale could get a set of bleachers like Heritage or Salem has, where you use that underside to store your track equipment, to store your soccer goals, that would meet one of the needs that they have there. Salem, kind of the same thing with the gym floor. You'll see the scoreboards up there. We're doing scoreboards for the stadiums, but our baseball and softball scoreboards at our middle and high schools, they're dated too. So what can we do to, again, enhance and be intentional about what we're doing that some thought and consideration is being put into our facilities and to give our athletes that great experience? And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the middle schools. They're the same. Only two of our middle schools have a field, a standard-sized field. The other two are practicing where they can, which is fine, but who cush the grass? Who maintains and does the pest control? So those are all some of the challenges that our high school and middle schools are having when they're trying to do their best to put out a product that is going to galvanize a community and have that support that they need. And this is just a picture of some of those entities. So the bleachers, the protective equipment, the scoreboards, the branding on the bleachers, and so forth. And then lastly, this is just an image of some of the facilities that our athletes have competed in over the last two years. And personally, I can tell you that when our athletes get off the bus, they're already defeated, because they're looking at the amenities that their opponents have had to prepare for that contest, and they already feel defeated, because they know what they've had to prepare for that. And just to give you an idea of what it looks like, these are some of the challenges of what our athletes have in their athletic facilities. And so when looking at what can we do to improve this experience and enhance what the aesthetics are in our athletic facilities, these are the challenges that they're facing. And so I know that education is the key before my specific students, sports is their vehicle to get them to that next level where they're going in their lives. So I invite any of you to come out and tour the facilities to see what I'm talking about. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
Keisha, I have a question, or actually not a question, but just, we just got out of a budget meeting about the upcoming budget. It's not easy. Have you thought about reaching out to some of the previous Rockdale students who are now perhaps in the NFL that might want to donate some stuff?
And some of those that are currently playing professional sports are doing.
They are.
But what they are, they're supporting both their middle and high school alma matas. And so still, what they're doing is still not meeting all of the needs that are there.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know, oh, what about booster clubs? Y'all have booster clubs? I know with my children, with that field house in particular, we did that. Do the boosters uphold anything now? Do y'all have booster clubs?
We have booster clubs, but in the comparative of interscholastic versus club sports, the interscholastic or high school sports are trying to keep up with the club. And so booster clubs are really trying And so booster clubs are really trying to ensure that meals are done and that they look good. And so another challenge is whereas we have some students that are here in our community, some of our teams are really transient. So they don't have people that are locked in to the community that see that long range goal of investing and then seeing that their younger child will have that opportunity to take advantage of that investment that they made.
I have a question. Um, first I want to say, um, being a former volleyball coach, I coached volleyball at Salem High School. Yes, I did. I most definitely understand the impact, the positive impact of sports on children. Now, I heard you say something about the AU teams and the use of the facilities. Are AU teams now um, allowed to use the facilities?
That is if they do a facilities request. So currently we only have one entity that has submitted that and that's for a track meet.
Okay, is that for a fee? I mean, they pay a fee to that?
They do, they go through the whole process of our use of facilities through our CFO.
Okay.
So are your football fields up for rental or?
So, yes. No, but it depends. And so we primarily don't allow the field necessarily, but the practice fields are definitely an option. We're preserving the investment.
But we're also tasked. And I do, and I, and I'm going to be honest and I, but I do know that you all, well Heritage per se, where the man was, I know Coach Landa was there. A group of former students used to do a turkey drive. Turkey, turkey's often out there every year. And I know a few years ago they was not allowed to do, I guess, once we did the enhancement. Cause I know they used to pour back into Heritage. And so I guess when they're not being able to use the facilities and things of the sort that kind of cut things off as well. But if you had a wish list, I mean, you have your wish list, but monetary wise, do you have a figure for each one of your schools to, to enhance them?
Oh, to just get them started, not the enhancements, but.
Uh, this list that you have, I mean, cause we have, not cause we ask not.
Yes, but it would, this is what they said, they have not prioritized what those things are. So I don't want to speak specifically and say, yes, 20,000 over here when that's not the priority that they want. It may be one of those other wishlist items that they want.
But this is information that we can, we can gather and make, and I can make available to the board.
Yes, sir.
Because there, there are people, they're connected in the community in ways that they can solicit uh, in various corners, exactly everyone up here, Ms. Brown and, and all of us. So I know we've had this conversation, you shared, uh, Dr. Riles, that commend her for the work that she's done with this strategic plan, aligning it to our district strategic plan, but making it specific to the athletic program. Uh, I want to thank the board for your support a few, several budgets ago for the athletic trainers.
Yes.
Of course, that, the, that, that was very significant, important. It's contributed to the national recognition that we have received. More importantly, when Keisha's sending those emails to Phil and myself and Dr. Freeman late at night when their injuries at games, away games and home games and giving us a briefing on what's happened and how everything is moving. I mean, this is the trainers and they're, I've been in athletic events where they sprung into action, right? And it's great and, and many of our board members have been at athletic events and have seen that as well. So we've made a lot of progress, but clearly we have a lot more progress to make in terms of, of monetary, but also programmatic and, and in other areas. I know I've spoken to Phil, Phil, the way we're structured currently, uh, Phil supervises our athletic department and works closely with Dr. Riles. But we know that we've been very intentional about where there's an intersection with facilities needs and our ESPLAS uh, funding, uh, but that, that's not the, the answer to everything. But it's a, it's a part of that answer that we will be able to address some of those issues. So thank you so much for opening our eyes and, and I'll make this strategic plan available to our board. I don't think I've done that yet, that I've shared the actual strategic plan, athletic strategic plan with you, but I will. But we were waiting for this presentation before I shared that.
Dr. Riles, I do have a question. Um, it's just a quick one. Um, say for example, the track and fee, um, the track, right, for track meets. Is it that we're not getting requests? Is it that we're not getting requests or um, we're turning people away?
I think it's more the requests.
We're not getting the request, okay? I'd been asked over the years a few times why we're not hosting our track and field events. Um, and that people were actually interested and that we, we were the ones that were not receptive to it. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm hearing the truth of the matter. You know, from the community, that's what the community um, was concerned about, that we were the ones that were not receptive to having events there. Yes, particularly with track and field.
And some of those requests were for practice facilities.
Practice, okay.
Yeah, so some of those were for practice and spring is our busiest time where now that we've added middle school soccer, they're now having to try to practice and compete at our high schools. And so it's been a challenge this spring in itself in trying to make sure our track programs, our soccer programs and our feeder middle school programs are getting that field time that they need to be competitive and do that skill development.
Okay, and um, kudos on that presentation. I loved how you, um, the strategic objective going throughout the entire thing, it was really good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Riles, appreciate it.
Thank you.
CFO Smith.
Good evening again, Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oates and the remaining board members. Um, tonight I'll be bringing the final, final March board report. And um, for the month of March, the revenues were 10.4 million dollars. The year-to-date revenues were 160, 168.9 million dollars, representing 84.5% of the budget. And this time last year, the revenues for March were 10.4 million dollars. And the year-to-date was 152.6 million dollars, representing 84.3% of the budget. The expenditures for March were 17.4 million dollars and the year-to-date was 156.8. That represents 76.5% of the current year budget. Last year, this time, the expenditures were 15.5 million dollars for the month and 108, 38.5 million dollars year-to-date, representing 75% of that budget. The encumbrances for March were 1,212,190 dollars. The fund balance at the end of March was 48,380,943. Last year's March's uh, fund balance was 52,762,710 dollars. Our assets are 48,380,943. We had no liabilities and our fund balance was 48,380,943 dollars. Um, SPOS five, so we're wrapping up SPOS five, our SPOS five complex, come, come, I'm gonna get it out. Collections are complete and the revenues received so far is 107.2 million dollars. The expenses to date are 90.7 million dollars and our current balance is approximately 16.5 million dollars remaining in SPOS five. That completes the March final budget report, excuse me, expenditure report, if you have any question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, uh, I just wanted to share an announcement that the Agribusiness Expo that's scheduled for Saturday at RCA has 450 students now enrolled to attend. Uh, and the event, uh, and that's great in terms of the, the participation. And there are 35 district, uh, different industry professionals with over 300 careers that are represented. So I, I do want to uh, acknowledge and commend um, uh, George, uh, who's been very instrumental in uh, pulling, in working with this uh, very closely, very committedly. So that, those are really excellent uh, numbers, uh, very good numbers. So we look forward to that. I don't have anything else to share, Madam Chairwoman, so I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Please review the important financial information Ms. Smith has uploaded under the information section. And the board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in March. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes for all board meetings?
Second, Janie Jones.
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Jones. Is there any um, discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. There is no old business or new business. Last week, the board voted to place the action items on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda?
Second, Akita.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Sandra Jackson-Litt to place all items under consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session for um, personnel?
So moved, Justin.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kenny and Ms. Jones for your motions. Um, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, it's eight 21, let's go into executive session and we will meet in the professional room, learning room, thank you. No, so let's go straight on, go.
Y'all, it's that new campaign. I remember visiting other schools, getting the girls off the bus to go to other schools and they're looking at you schools like they're palaces. I re, I mean. There are some. My stuff packed up. I have to leave my mouth open, nothing going on with you. Well.
Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Chris Tucker, currently Assistant Administrator at Conyers Middle School, to Assistant Principal at Conyers Middle School, effective July the 1st, 2024?
Second, Akita.
All right, a motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. Palmer. Um, all in favor? No discussion? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Dana Franklin, currently the Assistant Administrator at Edwards Middle School, to Assistant Principal at Edwards Middle School, effective July the 1st, 2024?
Second, Janie Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra Jackson-Litt and Ms. Jones for your motions. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Quinseela Taylor, currently Instructional Coach at Edwards Middle School, to Assistant Principal at Edwards Middle School, effective July the 1st, 2024?
So moved, Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny, and thank you, Ms. Jones, for your motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. With no further business. With no further business to discuss, do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting? All right, thank you, Ms. Sandra Jackson-Lett and Ms. Jones for your motion.
Yes.
Yes, and um, at this time, do we have any discussion? And all in favor? Motion carries. 8:31, the meeting is adjourned.